Start the show.
Okay. Good evening and welcome to the April 24th, 2023 City Council Roundtable. I am Mayor Ross and tonight's roundtable is being brought to you live using video conferencing technology provided by Zoom. Tonight's recording will be posted on the city's YouTube channel. So, welcome to all and thank you for joining us. City Clerk Dean, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Benson.
Here.
Councilmember Walton.
Here.
Councilmember Holloway.
Here.
Councilmember Mayhew.
Here.
Councilmember Washington.
Here.
Councilmember Christianson.
Here.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
And Mayor Ross.
Thank you, City Clerk Dean. I think all are in attendance. So we now move to our first item of this special business, which is to approve the agenda. Councilman, may I have a motion to approve the roundtable agenda?
So move.
Second. Moved by Mayor Pro Tim Holloway, second by Councilmember Christianson. Any discussion? CNN, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed, nay? And the motion passes unanimously and we have approved the agenda. So tonight's agenda item is a closed session pursuant to RCW 42 dot three zero dot one four zero four B for the planning or adoption of a strategy or position to be taken during the course of any collective bargaining proceedings or reviewing the proposals made in the negotiations or proceedings while in progress. This session will go to six fifty PM and those attending will be the Director of Finance and HR, Jen Ferguson, Budget Manager, Drew Bote, Assistant City Attorney, Astridton, Parks Public Works Director, Mike Chambliss, City Minister, Mike Sarwine, and our management person, analyst, Carson Hornsby. No action will be taken following the conclusion of this closed session. So the council will adjourn directly from the closed session and will reconvene at seven PM for these council meetings. That we will, we have received, each of you have received a link and so we will log off of this meeting during the closed executive session meeting. Thank you.
You, is there somebody online in the executive session? Who's going to be online for this?
Done.
Please start the recording. Okay, great. Okay. So, good evening. We just completed a excited session and now we are into regular session to start the regular meeting of the city council is now 7:00 PM. So, please stand and join me in saying the pledge of allegiance and we'll ask Councilmember Watten to lead us.
I pledge my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. City Clerk, please note all in attendance, as we did earlier. And we move to our first item of regular business is to approve the agenda. Council may have a motion to approve the agenda.
So, move.
Second.
Second.
It's moved by Mayor Proton Holloway, second by Karen Christensen to approve the agenda. Also, any discussion? Mayor Proton Holloway.
Kind of a two-step. I'd like to, under appointments, put in their council committee appointments, but I would like to move the appointment section to happen after proclamations. Let's get to the main event and then we can do business.
Okay.
Second.
Second.
A second.
It's moved by Mayor Proton Holloway, second by Carrie Christensen to add appointments and we will follow, that'd be number four, to be after proclamations. All in favor of that? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Right. Is there any other changes? Right. The rest of the agenda stands as approved. Great. Moving on. So, tonight we have a special presentation. And we have a presentation of the Kiwanis kindness essay contest and essay winners chosen by our public safety group. So, each year, this Snoqualmie Valley Kiwanis hosts a kindness essay contest offered to fifth grade classes throughout the district. Our public safety group and I wanted to recognize students in our city. So, a team of seven fire and police staff reviewed essays of the Snoqualmie students and selected four essays represents kindness. Either something that the student has done for others or that others have been done for them. Students that had their essays chosen were recognized in their classroom by our fire and police staff and also were issued a certificate recognizing this accomplishment and a $50 award that was from the Snoqualmie Firefighters Association. So, tonight, we have four young ladies will be joining us. And I'll read them off and then we'll have you come up and stand up front and then we'll have you read your essays. So, we have Natalia Anderson, a fifth grader with the parent partnership program. Lauren Runzaville, a fifth grader Cascade View Elementary. Rachel Bartholomew, a fifth grader at Timber Ridge Elementary, and Daisy Sanchez, a fifth grader at Snoqualmie Elementary. So, I'll have you, please come up and join me up front. Testing. This is working great. So, the first, so which one's Natalia? This is Mike. You're gonna use the mic and you can read your essay.
This is my kindness essay by Natalia Anderson. You can train for kindness and you can work at kindness like you do for basketball or hockey. It comes naturally to some and for those who don't think they know how to use it, they can achieve kindness by working at it. Kindness is about how you use it. Kindness can be hidden from people and kindness can be shared with people. What's up to you how you use it. I will write about how I use kindness to help a friend with her homework when I really wanted to do something other than homework. I was riding in my mom's car to my best friend Laura's house, hoping that we could do something fun together. When I got there, she looked nervous like something was bothering her. I didn't pay attention to this right away and I was ready to start having some fun. She looked down and didn't say a word. When I went inside, I ran up to her room, hoping that she would soon feel better. Instead, she just rolled on her bed and looked at the ceiling. I asked her, I asked her what was wrong. Laura just looked at me without responding. I tried again, but she looked a little annoyed this time, so I stopped. I went downstairs to get some mango juice when I saw a piece of homework lying on the table unfinished. I brought upstairs and asked if it was hers. She tried not to look at me, but I knew she felt guilty. I rolled my eyes and asked again. Laura did not want to lie to me, so she finally told me it was her homework. She had been struggling with it and had hoped to finish it before I arrived, but she did not understand the questions and how to answer them. I didn't really want to help her because it was her homework and I really wanted to play outside instead. My first thought was just to leave her alone until she was finished, but then I realized I needed to go faster if I helped. I really, 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 really did not want to help her, but something inside me wanted me to. I took a deep breath and told her I could help her. She looked at me with a glow in her eyes. I started reading the questions and in no time we finished. I felt a little concerned that maybe I was helping her too much with the answers and I did not know if I had done the right thing until she showed me a problem that she was able to do on her own. I smiled at her and was happy to see that my help had taught her how to finish her homework. I started walking downstairs when she stopped me and asked me to come back up. I looked at her inside, thinking there is more homework to be done, but I said okay with one last longing glance outside and then turned away from the window, heading back to her room. When I got to her room, I saw her sitting at her desk smiling. She held something in her hand, but I could not tell what it was. Laura told me it was a necklace that she had made a long time ago and would like me to have it as a thanks for helping her. I smiled at her and declined the offer. I did not feel like I could get anything because of my help. I was just pleased I was able to offer her this. She confused and put the necklace away, but I knew I had done the right thing. I then grabbed her hand and we ran toward the door where we finally went outside. That day showed me that kindness can make a big difference in someone else's life than just doing what you want to do. Even though it might not be your homework, it does not matter if you are able to help someone struggling by showing them kindness and offering your help. It is your choice to offer your help and this gives you the best feeling when you can help someone. You do not like, you do not like at all like cleaning their room, washing dishes or even homework, but you can for kindness by helping them when they need you because you are there for them and then someday they would turn the kindness to you. That's how kindness should work in the world between family, friends and others.
Very nice. Thank you. Maybe we'll have you still stand up here because eventually we'll get a picture. So, it was very nice how you're very helpful and inspiring kindness in others. So, thank you. So, Lauren.
My name is Lauren Rounsville. In December of 2022, me and my friends were outside playing in the snow. Me and my, we were in my neighborhood building snow forts when I saw my neighbor, Mr. Randy Petgrave and his seven-year-old daughter Sophie. I said hello and went over to see him. I asked him if he liked the snow, thinking he would say yes. In a way, yes, he told me. I asked him what he meant and he said it was a small world for him when it snowed. You see, Randy was in the army and had, well, hurt his leg and has a disability and needs a cane and he can't step over clumps of ice and snow. I felt very sorry for him because he can't go very far. Mr. Randy lives four houses down from me and couldn't even go to my house. So, I went home and got my shovel and I, so I could move the ice out of the way for Mr. Randy. My brother Miles, my neighbor Miles, yes, there are two of them, and my other neighbor Andrew were all outside building a snow fort. I asked them if they wanted to help, but all three of them said no. I asked if they were sure and they said positive. So, I had to move the clump myself. The clump was reasonably heavy considering that it was entirely ice. There were five huge chunks of it. They all weighed a lot and so I got my shovel and basically picked up an ice block, put it on the shovel and moved it away. I did that for like the next 15 minutes and then went back to tell Mr. Randy that I had done. I rang his doorbell and told them that I had provided safe passage for him and Sophie to go farther. It made me feel really good. I hope it made him feel good too. When I saw him later that day, walking his dog, all I could do was smile. I was very happy that I did that for him.
One of my family rules is to be selfless. This means to put other people's wants before your own. Sometimes it means, for example, to let my sister pick the first treat or help my parents clean up dinner when I would rather watch a show. Being selfless is one way to be kind. Because of this rule, I've done a lot of kind things in my life, but there is one act of kindness that was especially hard for me. When I was four years old, I was acting differently. I was acting hyper like I couldn't sit still. I was hungry all the time. My hair started to fall out and I just felt sick. After going to a heart doctor to make sure my heart was okay, the doctors figured out that I had an autoimmune disease called Graves' disease. It was, it was such a scary sounding name. I was frightened. I didn't know what it meant to have it and I didn't know if I would be cured. I did find out that that it meant I would have a lot of tests and visits to Seattle Children's Hospital. About five years later, I was diagnosed, when I was about five years after I was diagnosed, I decided to make a picture book about how I dealt with Graves' disease. I did this so the boys and girls who are being diagnosed with Graves' disease could read it and not feel scared. I was very sick when I was got, when I got diagnosed. I even had trouble walking. There were no books for children that explained what was happening to me. Now, I feel like an ordinary kid, just one who has to take some medication and visit the doctor more often. I gave the book to my doctor at Seattle Children's Hospital to give to his patients who are diagnosed with Graves' disease. I want them to know that they will be okay. It was hard to write the book because it reminded me of when I was sick and missing out on a lot of things that my friends were doing. I wanted to make sure other kids knew that they were gonna feel better after they, their diagnosis, even if they were sick now. I hope that others too can be kind because if we are all kind to others and help each other, the world would be a better place. It's not just for the people we help. It makes you feel better helping others when, when they need help. Even the little acts of kindness make a big difference. Now, go spread a little kindness today.
And we have Daisy.
Kindness. Kindness to me is a feeling you get inside from helping others. It's doing something good and feeling good afterwards. Kindness is doing something good for another person without thinking of getting anything in return. In my neighborhood, there is a small tree lot and in early December 2022, me and my mom made soup for the crew that worked at the tree lot. When me and my mom gave the crew the soup, it made me feel cozy inside. It made me feel like I was useful for something. I didn't, I didn't really get to see how the crew, I didn't really get to see the crew because we had to leave, because we had to leave to go to our house pretty quickly, but I think that they liked the soup and that they were very thankful. We do this every year. Sometimes it's soup, sometimes it's burgers, but I know that we can, that we can, that we can give them something delicious, them delicious food to eat when they are working so hard in the cold. I think that being kind is important because when people aren't kind to others, it makes them feel bad. It affects their mood for the whole day and that makes them not kind to others. That creates a cycle of hate and nobody wants that. But when people are kind to other people, that makes them both happy and that has a good effect on both their moods. Then, the person that they were being kind to will be kind to other people. That is a cycle of kindness.
So, thank you very much for reading your essays. They were all wonderful. You did a fantastic job, each one of you. And I have a certificate recognition, the states in recognition of excellent academic achievement and award-winning kindness essay. Congratulations on inspiring others to spread kindness.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Congratulations.
Great job.
Well done.
Thank you very much. Right. Next item is AB 23-035, Proclamation Affordable Housing Week. Affordable Housing, annual initiative sponsored by the Housing Development Consortium. The theme for Affordable Housing Week in 2023 is Housing Equity. HGC's goal this year is to highlight the role affordable housing plays in stabilizing our communities. So, whereas all people should have access to safe, healthy and affordable homes with communities that provide opportunity. And whereas the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, also known as HUD, defines affordable housing as as housing on which the occupant is paying no more than 30% of gross income for housing costs, including utilities. And whereas the Department of Commerce projects that by 2044, King County needs nearly 200,000 net new housing units for households at or below 80% area median income. And whereas studies have found that each $100 increase in median rent results in a 15% increase in homelessness in metro areas and a 39% increase in homelessness in nearby suburbs and rural areas. And whereas everyone benefits from affordable housing, including the people who reside in these properties, their neighbors, businesses, employers and community as a whole. And whereas United to, to raise public awareness, people, organizations and communities throughout King County participating in local Affordable Housing Week activities to elevate the critical need to create healthy communities and affordable housing. And whereas the city the goals, objectives and purposes of Affordable Housing Week and in doing so firmly recommits itself to ensuring that our community's recovery from the crisis at hand is equitable and that all people in Snoqualmie live with dignity and community's recovery from the crisis at hand is equitable and that all people in Snoqualmie live with dignity and safe, healthy and affordable homes. Now therefore I, Catherine Ross, Mayor of Snoqualmie, do hereby proclaim the week of May seventh through thirteenth, 2023 as Affordable Housing Week. So do we have? Is there anyone that want to speak to that? Oh, you're, okay. Miss. Mister Mc, McEckering?
Mayor Ross, you just won my vote, but I live in North Bend for pronouncing that right. My name is Jim McEckering. I'm engaged in work Snow Valley Housing Task Force. I live in North Bend, though I shop here to ensure economic development and equity along the way. Also involved housing development consortium of Seattle and King County. Engaged in attainable housing for the last forty years in advocacy and implementation. Part of the vision of your comp plan includes these words. Snoqualmie is a city that is livable and a complete community. I appreciate that. And thank you for this proclamation for Affordable Housing Week. I recognize that you recognize the need. I commend the work you do in achieving bold collaborative impact and policies. Nation that all might have a home and a healthy environment. Thank you for your mentoring and modeling this critical need for attainable affordable housing in our region and community. I just learned from four young women that attainable housing is an act of kindness. Thank you for this proclamation.
Thank you very much. Thank you for being with us.
Do I take one or do I get one?
I'll email it to you.
You're very kind. Thank you.
Would you have the one for you? All right. We have a second proclamation, which is Arbor Day. So Snoqualmie celebrated its Tree City USA status and commitment to the environment with Arbor Day event on Saturday, April twenty-second at Riverview Park. This event was for all ages and included tree planting and native plant restoration. So whereas Arbor Day was first observed 150 years ago with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska in 1872. And whereas trees can be a solution to combating climate change by reducing the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cutting heating and cooling costs, moderating the temperature, cleaning the air and producing oxygen and providing habitat for wildlife. And whereas the city of Snoqualmie promotes the planting of trees on public and private lands, reforestation of open spaces and other tree protection enhancements that help sustain the natural character of the Snoqualmie landscape. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas and beautify our community. And whereas the presence of trees in our city directly improves human health and well-being. Now therefore I, Catherine Ross, Mayor of the city of Snoqualmie, do hereby proclaim April twenty-second as Arbor Day 2023. And I'm not sure if we have Urban Forester online. Say a couple of words. No, right. And so you can read the full proclamation for both of those online. And now we will be into time for our public comment, time for residents to comment on items that are not on the agenda. So first.
Order, Mayor. I thought we were gonna.
You're right.
Before or after?
I'm willing to do it after.
No, we can do it now, if you want to do it now.
Most of you should have received an email again in our last council. We appointed Louis Washington as our new council member. And taking a look at committee assignments and in consideration that Congressman Washington is now gonna have to run a campaign in short order. I was seeking a position at which I'd give him the most exposure to the broadest aspects of, of things we're doing as a council. So with that, I would like to do the committee as our third member. Congressman Watten would come off, but he has an existing assignment in public safety.
Yes.
Okay, so there's no, again, if you do the math, there are twelve committee seats for Danny. Council members, so you've got fourteen. There's at least two of us will just be doing one council committee at a time. Trying to balance all those. Again, I would like to appoint Congressman Washington to the F and A committee and like your ratification to that appointment.
Pastor Mayhew?
Move to approve the appointment.
Second.
Just moved by Congressman Mayhew, second by Congressman Johnson to appoint Congressman Washington to F and A committee and remove Rob Button or Congressman Watten from that. Any discussion? Was in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Right, it passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Now we move on to public comment. At this time, we'll provide residents items, they can comment on items that are not on the agenda. So a few ground rules. Snoqualmie residents who are not present have a right to have their elected representatives perform their duties on behalf of the city in efficient orderly manner. Therefore, comments will be limited to three minutes. Each, please wait to be recognized and state your name and city of residence. Direct your comments to the council as a whole and not to individual members. And please note that this is not a time to ask questions of council, mayor or staff or to engage in debate. And please respect the decorum of these proceedings. All due respect will be afforded to you. So with that, would anyone like to speak to any concerns that's not on the agenda tonight? So so please raise your hand either online or, or in council chambers. Not seen anyone online raising their hands nor in the council chambers. Right, so we move on to the consent agenda, which contains approval of the city council meeting minutes for dated April tenth, 2023. The Privy Claims Approval Report dated April twenty-fourth, 2023, AB twenty-three dash zero five-two, motion to select CDK Construction Services for the job or contracting. AB twenty-three dash zero twenty fifty-four, motion to select Forma Construction for the job order contracting. And AB twenty-three dash zero five-five, motion to select Sabre Contractors for the job order contracting. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilor Benson, second by Mayor Pro Tim Holloway. Is any discussion? Is there any public comment on this item? So please raise your hand. Seeing none and no discussion? All of us in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? So the consent agenda passes unanimously. Next, we are moving on to committee reports. Is there any community report for the Community Development Committee?
No report.
For public safety, the first committee report is AB twenty-two, twenty-three dash zero five zero memorandum of understanding with Snoqualmie Valley School District for the School Resource Officer Program. Councilor Christensen, would you please read the summary and motion?
You can scroll down to it. This agenda bill requests approval of an updated memorandum of understanding with the Snoqualmie Valley School District number four-ten for the School Resource Officer Program. And the proposed action moved to approve the memorandum of understanding with the Snoqualmie Valley School District number four-ten Resource Officer Program and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
Moved by Councilor Christensen and second by Mayor Pro Tim Holloway. Is there any public comment regarding this item? The School Resources Officer Program MOU. If anyone raising their hands online or in City Hall. Chief Phipps, did you want to provide an update on this document? It has been updated since it was last in, reviewed by council.
Yes, good evening. Thank you for allowing me the time to bring this back to you once again. I hope that we've heard and responded to your concerns. And if you've had an opportunity to look at the updated draft we have before you, it does talk about specifically, there was a concern about the manner in which I or the city would receive information from the school district regarding performance evaluations. I think we had to section C where it states in both written and oral feedback. Hopefully that will address that issue. One of the other issues that was talked in depth was the support of the SRO. And I very much appreciated that support. And I think if you go to page seven, article two A, it specifically talks about that support and specifically in D. It says information concerning possession of, by any person on school grounds of unlawful drugs or weapons or any unlawful activity, except in the event of a district employee prohibited by law from disclosing certain information, in which case only the employee who is subject to such prohibition is excused from of information. What that's saying is that they are now bound to, to advise, notify us if there's a crime or anybody on campus of their property carrying a weapon. And so I hope that has addressed the issues that were, were concerned as well. Also, we addressed the issue with the grievance process that was identified in this document. And specifically, what is the alternative if in fact, after step one, there is not an agreement? And I think that we identified that there shall be a written concern, written decision concerning the complaint. If that complaint is not agreed with, the parent of the child shall have a process where they can, five days, respond to that and go to step two during the grievance process. So I hopefully that will address the issue that there is a response and an avenue to move further on in the grievance. And I think that is, hopefully addressed the issues that we had that were specific. If you have any questions. I also have Superintendent Scholfeld here as well.
Did, first of all, did Chair want to, to comment before I kick it out?
That's fine. So this matter, we've obviously decided to place it not on the consent agenda, but just so that folks who go ahead and go through and review the red line changes, make sure that they're comfortable with what was proposed. Superintendent Scholfeld did also attend public safety, which we appreciated. He voiced the districts and his support for the, the program as well. I, that everybody signs off on it and this, your request.
Councilor Benson?
I know that I had concerns about this and I, after reading this, I, all of my concerns are addressed and the support of the superintendent. I feel like we've got a really good understanding, which I think is the whole point of an MOU, so.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tim Holloway?
So I'm, I'm supportive of this all for tonight, but I do have a nitoid that I really wanted the performance feedback from the school district not to give the appearance that it was discretionary. This is, this is a mutual employee of ours. Your input should be in there. Okay, so please do that, but I'm not gonna force a word in on this. Let's just go with it.
Any other comments? Okay, move to vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? It's unanimous and the SRO MOU passes. We'd like to thank our Chief Phipps and our Superintendent Scholfeld and everyone for working on this. And thank you so much. Moving on, is there any? I guess the other thing is, free information only. We have AB twenty-three dash zero five-three, which is the quarterly fire accreditation report. It's in your packet for review, review, review at your leisure. So any further report from public safety?
The only thing that I would add is just that during public safety, we've started talking about moving forward potentially with a permit parking ordinance to address citizen concerns in connection with parking up in the Eagle Point neighborhood. We had a number of citizens come in and get public comment, and we will plan to speak about it at future meetings as well as we work to resolve the issue.
Thank you. Any report from Finance Administration Committee?
No further report tonight.
All right. Next report is the mayor's report. So we, we had a great turnout for Arbor Day event at Riverview Park this past weekend. There were over forty volunteers that planted fifteen trees and over a hundred and variety of bushes in the park and also in the Long River Vintman Park area. We also had a nice volunteer last, volunteer event last week where we recognized volunteers that sit on our commissions, that volunteer for firefighters and EMTs. We had forest stewards there and, and more. And we had over, we had over a hundred and ninety volunteers for the city. And they put in, you know, well over six thousand hours annually. And we'd like to thank Councilmember Chris Christensen, Watten, and Watten for attending and handing out awards. Thank you. Representative Callan was able to get another $160,000 in the budget for our behavioral health program. So she was able to get that and it was a nice, it's great. This has been a significant program and has made a big impact for our police, our fire and for our community. And I've confirmed that both the State House and Senate included the State Route eighteen widening funding in their final approved transportation budget. So thanks to great advocacy by our elected officials, our chamber and the many voices to help keep that funding in this biennium to target completion for, completion for widening all the way would be 2029, at which point, you know, State Route eighteen will be four lanes and will be just greatly improve our safety and congestion. So that was great. So that's all I have for the mayor's report. We've gone to commission and committee liaison reports, we, reports. Mayor Pro Tim Holloway?
Just one item. It's tomorrow's election day and there is something in there for our hospital. So do you do consideration and make your vote count?
And, and behavioral health crisis clinics.
Yeah.
Yes.
Vote early, vote off.
Yep. Councilor Christensen?
I would just say that last week, the city and the YMCA met with the school board to look at investment. The YMCA last week had their advisory board meeting as well. They're focusing on this as the community center expansion project. In addition, Healthy Kids Day will be this weekend on April twenty-ninth from ten to one. The event is free and open to the community at the community center. There will be bounce houses and activities. And then also for KCD, which is the King Conservation District, they are looking at redoing their ILA with King County. That ILA makes up ninety-two percent of their budget, so you will likely be seeing some additional things coming forward on that as well. So thank you. Thanks.
Two items. One is Meadowbrook, and we're going on a field trip Monday morning and put our boots on. The tribe is going to take us on a guided tour of their test plots for canvas fields. That's the first thing. And then secondly, is on May third at noon to one, we're going to have a discussion through the Snoqualmie Valley Housing Task Force about legislation that's passed in Olympia and other things that are in the works and as well as other things happening in the area. And that's with Ben Taylor from Master Builders Association. So it will be up on the website, City Data Plus for the link, or you can join us in person. So twelve to one on next Wednesday.
Right, thank you.
Where? Where? In person, where?
In person, where? At the Umquah Community Room.
The commission or committee reports? And all liaison reports? The PRC Academic Development District Board?
No meaning.
No? King County Conservation District Advisory Committee?
I did that one already. I apologize. I jumped again.
Oh, there you go. PRC Outreach Committee? P four C Outreach Committee. Councilor Mayhew?
No meeting to report.
Council Association pick, the issues committee, conservation.
Uh, no, no report.
Regional Law, Safety and Justice Committee, Councilman Watten.
Uh, I will let everybody know the next meeting when it happens. We only meet seven times a year.
Okay. King County. And that, there was actually was. Three of flood control. And district and projects for. Good overview, but then also for new members that have joined the committee. And then, so it's a refresher. And then Regional Transit Committee. We have a Sound City Association caucus that happens before the Regional Transit Committee meeting. And so we had General Manager Michelle Allison from Metro join us during that meeting and. You know, she has a spot every once in once. Why are they there? And so I requested a, as I always do, a bus across state road eighteen. And more frequent service for Snoqualmie. The R T C meeting. There have been some issues with some of the. Metro buses that actually just can't. They may cancel, you know, one of the times that they're supposed to be showing up without any type of notification. And so they're. They're short on drivers and so we're, you know. Have better notifications if any particular routes, any routes are canceled. So. That is, that is about it. So I think the next item would actually be going, go Mayor Pro Tim Holloway? The next item, we don't, that's the end of our agenda. And so we discussed earlier about going back into closed session to continue our discussion. Repro Tim Holloway, is that a hand up now?
That is a hand up now.
Okay.
Are we expecting any actions of any of the executive sessions?
No, there will not be. So I will, is that correct? So I will. We will adjourn out of this. So I will, I'll read it in. So tonight's agenda item is a closed session pursuant to R C W forty-two dot three zero dot one four zero. Four B for the planning or adoption of a strategy or position to be taken during the course of any collective bargaining. Proceedings or reviewing proposals made in negotiations or proceedings while in progress. And we will ask that Director of Finance and H R Jen Ferguson attend, Budget Manager Drew Bute. Assistant City Attorney Astrid, Astrid Ten. Parks and Public Works Director Chambliss, the Administrator Sarwine, Management Analyst Carson Hornsby attend. And how long do you think we will need? So should we start with an hour and then? Does that sound fine? Let's start with an hour and then we will, so we will. Probably end around eight forty-five, but no action will be taken following conclusion of the closed session. The council will adjourn directly from the closed session. And so we will not reconvene at that point. So we will close out our meeting. And go into closed session and then most likely be completed by. Eight forty-five P M. Yeah. Mayor Pro Tim Holloway?
We are, we are not having a second session involving land acquisition?
No.
Okay.
Right, you're not. So we do already have a link that we will go back into. So should we adjourn out of this meeting?
Yes. Move to adjourn?
So move to adjourn by. Yes.
I just want to verify that that's correct legal procedure. We can adjourn and then continue to have an executive session?
No, I think we would have the exec, the session first and then adjourned it.
That's what I thought. Nay.
So we will, okay, but there you go. We will go directly into our closed session then and adjourn out of that. At the end. Ready? Right, everyone get out of your meeting and please connect into the closed session. Thank you, everyone.